Have a second?
Second, Colonel.
All in favor?
Aye.
Notice this regular meeting of the Pittman Board of Education was advertised in South Jersey ties posted for a hall and a copy thereof delivered to all Pittman schools to be posted and posted on the district's website. Further notice was posted and filed as required by law students. The board will meet in closed session at 6:00 PM in the Pittman High School Media Center. The president shall entertain any objections with supporting reasons to the content of this meeting on the grounds that it violates the open public meeting act. Seeing none, good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Miles, will you please call roll?
Mrs. Bolton.
Here.
Mrs. Farrell.
Here.
Mr. Grossman.
Present.
Mrs. Higby-Iono.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Papalardo.
Here.
Mrs. Pope.
Here.
We have a quorum seven zero.
Okay, going to bring us to the evening's presentations. I will turn it over to Mrs. Stewart.
Are you thinking we could do it now? I was thinking we'd do it after the committee meetings.
Okay, so no presentations this evening?
No presentations.
Okay, so good. All right, it's going to bring us to our first public comment. The Pivot Public School Board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. This is the first of two public comments we will have tonight. The first public hearing is on agenda items only. This is a public comment and not a dialogue between the board and the public. You'll have three minutes to speak and is your opportunity to comment or ask questions. In accordance with Board Policy Number 0167, we ask that you state your name and the municipality of residence and group affiliation applicable. If you recognize speech, please stand at the podium located to my left and speak clearly into the microphone. Okay, seeing no one, that will take us to correspondence. Mr. Miles, any correspondence?
We have no correspondence.
All right. I will now move to accept a motion for the minutes of the Pittman Board of Education as held on the dates listed below are approved and printed and reading dispensable. May I have a second?
Second, Papalardo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Any objections? Okay, seeing none. It's going to take us to the presence report. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Bolton. She was our delegate assembly representative.
All right, on May tenth of this year, I attended the NJ SBA Delegate Assembly at Mercer County Community College. The meeting lasted about three hours. Leadership gave some opening comments on the improvements they were making on the website. They highlighted some events hosted such as the Eighth Grade Dialect, which we hosted last year. And then they went over the rules for voting and the resolutions. There were three resolutions this year. The first one was sponsored by Woodbury School District, and this resolution would change the NJ SBA policy to include esports as a varsity awarded sport in interscholastic competition. That resolution passed ninety percent to ten percent. Resolution two was sponsored by Franklin Township in Warren County, and the resolution would change the requirements needed to be a school nurse to acknowledge the shortages of the position across the state. That resolution passed fifty-one percent to forty-nine percent. And then resolution three was North Jersey School. How do you say that? Kidatini? Kidid- kidid- kidatini? Kidatini, right? Those North Jersey schools. It's like another state up there, right? The resolution would allow students a limited number of excused absences to attend events associated with trades and future employment besides the military and colleges that are already approved. That one also passed ninety-six to four percent. The minute- the meeting closed shortly after voting.
That's it? Thank you. We have a pretty short presence report. I want to thank Mrs. Higby-Iono. She has made an effort this year to attend all of the extra and co-curricular events at our school, so it's been really nice to have her kind of report back for all of us that aren't able to attend and let us know kind of what's going on. She's the plays, the concerts, all the sports events. She's kind of done it all.
Yeah.
But you would, you would if they allowed it.
I think our superintendent could get it into all.
They still tell me that.
We could have the ninth hole later.
Can't get around the golf par.
The ninth hole for the senior pair.
I know.
Don't let them play.
We only allowed to have people standing at the ninth hole. At regular matches.
That's what they're doing.
I didn't, I didn't get this one either. For winter track.
Next year.
Next year.
Winter track.
Yeah.
That's my sister's fault. No, no, no.
All right, so at the, we had the Gloucester and Camden County School Board Association meeting. Mrs. Pope was recognized for her new boardmanship certification. Mr. Grossman and Miss Papalardo were recognized as certified board members. I was recognized as the master board member. We also had our annual, or I'm sorry, our election that we hold every two years for the Gloucester County School Board Association. And so Mrs. Higby-Iono was in a hotly contested race. She's our new VP of Legislative Relations for Gloucester County, and I'm our new Gloucester County President. So our hope is to kind of take an opportunity and look at some of the meeting format and educate ourselves so that we met with the vice president who was elected. We'll both be, we'll all be sworn in over the summer. Our term starts July one and have some planning meetings so that we can talk about format for the Gloucester and Camden County meetings. So my next hope is to reach out to the Camden County representatives and sit down with them so we can kind of all be on the same page in advance. And then I also wanted to thank Mrs. Papalardo. She organized our teacher appreciation cupcakes from the board, so we really appreciate. Mrs. Papalardo is like the superstar of always making sure that we have something to thank all of our staff and does all of the work and carries all the cakes and does it all. So we really appreciate that she does that for the Board of Education members. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Preston.
Yes, thanks, Mrs. Miller. Yeah, Pittman, well represented. Congratulations to you guys on your, on your appointments there. That's impressive. I know that's the talk of the town is that Pittman is well represented throughout the county. Happy to report we had one, one reported HIB, one confirmed HIB for the month. This is statutory, you see on the superintendent's report there, the HIB self-assessment grades for twenty-three, twenty-four. To my right is Mr. Caltabiano. He is our HIB coordinator for the district, so he's done a really good job this year. This is from the twenty-three, twenty-four report, self-score report from the schools. You can see some areas of strength, obviously, you know, some robust programs, character programs, some areas to build on, and some things that you've already taken action on. I want to report, obviously, we've had Mr. Long come in and speak to our HIB staff. I appreciate you doing that.
You're welcome.
It's a tricky law, the HIB law, a lot of nuance to it, timelines, all that, and he, Mr. Long does a really good job distilling that, making it black and white, and I thought it was great. There was really good feedback from that, from our HIB specialists at each of the buildings.
Excellent.
Just last month, I think you recall, we brought in a character firm called Citrus. They actually have some Pittman ties. They, a lot of them live in Pittman. They're a Philadelphia-based firm, but they, Citrus stands for Character Integrity. I'm drawing a blank on the acronym, but the equals results and success. And the idea is that we, you really build a strong character program. They're tightly affiliated with National Schools of Character, character.org, and so that's, that's a push we're doing as well. Certainly, character app lessons that are happening at PES are all part of this kind of HIB, preventative HIBs. We want to get to net zero, and I think the group and the teachers are doing a great job of that. So, and that's my report for the HIB self-assessment grades for twenty-three, twenty-four. I do want to mention two of our top five sitting here. I was able to go and Mrs. Miller also attended. Our top five, we honored the superintendent's group in the county, honored the top five of each school district. Mrs. Mazzola and Miss Yordi were part of that, along with Miss Armignio, Miss other Megan Mazzola, and it was great to see, you know, everybody coming out there. Matty Peak, yes, yes, thank you very much. Yeah, Matty Peak was there as well. All the families came. It was, it was a really nice evening. You should probably saw the, the social media post up recently as well. In a little bit, I'm going to have Miss Stewart introduce our new leadership, her new leadership team that she's assembling at the high school, Miss Christina Skanes and Miss Caitlin Hess. I'll let her read their bios, and she said, can I, can I do? I said, yeah, you can steal my thunder for the night. But really, it's, really, they emerged out of an impressive group, eighty-one applicants total for those two positions combined. There was some overlap. We're really seeing an uptick in that. We have a, for instance, at the PES fourth grade position, there's a fourth grade opening. We have a hundred and seventy-four applicants at this time. And so really impressive to see a lot of people really wanting to come to Pittman, so we're really happy about that, and that's really a testament to, you know, certainly your work as a board and changing the narratives, you know, people on the referendum committee and, you know, Pittman's here to stay and sort of really kind of getting that message out. So really appreciate just the community, the civic support here is tremendous. So thank you so much, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. That's going to bring us to our super, super, let's get it, I'll get it here. Student representative report.
Pittman Elementary School and Memorial School do not have a report for this evening, but will.
All right, good.
Over at the junior high school, the students got to attend their spring luau dance at the beginning of May. Everyone had a great time dancing, playing games, and participating in the limbo contest. Juniors and seniors were given the opportunity to attend prom last week. The event started off with promenade where everyone was given the opportunity to showcase their outfits for the big night. Students then headed over to Pylons Golf Club to enjoy good food, dance, and enjoy time with their classmates. The class of twenty-twenty-five is currently prepping for the end of their senior year. There are many events coming up such as the senior awards banquet, senior dinner, the all-sports banquet, cap decorating, and graduation as the hundredth class from Pittman. So many exciting events to conclude their high school experiences.
Thank you. All right, that's going to take us to Finances and Facilities. I'll turn it over to our committee chairman, Mr. Grossman.
My great today, ma'am. Thank you. Finance and Facilities Committee met via Teams meeting on Wednesday, 5:14 at 3:30 PM, and lasted one hour. We adjourned at 4:30 PM. In attendance along with myself were April Miller, Rebecca Higby-Iono, Dr. Preston, and Rob Miles. Topics discussed included the approval of a $2,000 donation from Oceans First for the replacement of the scoreboard at the soccer field at Al Seon Park, a joint replacement effort between the school district and the borough, splitting the cost fifty-fifty. We thank Oceans First for their generosity in this most important endeavor. Rob Miles is working with the borough CFO to obtain a schedule of when tax payments will be made to the district, and we anticipate that schedule to be ironed out by July first of this year. Also discussed were the bids or loan bid for the referendum project at the track and field and the drainage situation. Boy, I gotta take those now, in front of the auditorium. The bid is slightly higher than anticipated, but this vendor is widely regarded as being a prominent provider for quality track and field layouts and renovations. We compared the overcost with some of the savings initiatives we've already seen from other projects, and we've agreed to the most cost responsible and necessary layout of the three versions of the bid that were proposed. We are still deciding, I don't know if, Rob, did we get the answer back on the color?
We did get an answer back. So red, we can do red or black. Red is slightly less expensive, so we have the option. That's something that we can, we can do.
Right.
We'll have to let them, okay, we'll have to let them know in the next, within the next probably two months.
Black looks better till it fades.
We'll do it, yeah, let's, we'll do it in discussion. Go ahead.
We are still deciding if the colors should be red or black for the track. Both are the two colors with the longest UV protection against sun fading. Rob will follow up if there's a cost adjustment in that area. Just so you know, Pittman orange and blue were also discussed, and research turned us away from those as they are known to fade faster than red or black surfaces, well. The rain garden is under construction at Memorial School, a project that was one hundred percent funded through donations and enhances our school's appearance as well as a learning point for the students at Memorial. And we'll leave the last part off for next month. More to follow up on that Chromebook policy for next month. We'll table that for now. That concludes my report, and with that, I make a motion to move.
So you do one through twenty-four, right?
Motion one through twenty-four on the agenda, and a walk-on motion. Item number twenty-five, walk-on item number twenty-five, authorizing the submission of other capital project documents to the New Jersey Department of Education for the security vestibule entrance at Pittman Elementary School. May I get a second or any discussion?
Wait, let's get a second. May I have a second?
Second, Pope.
Discussion? So one of the, we, Mr. Grossman kind of summarized the conversation that we had about the red or black for the track. Our primary concern was durability, and we just wanted to find out if there was a cost differential because I'm always trying to eke out every penny.
Maybe we could have our new assistant principal of athletics weigh in.
She, oh, I love it, yeah. Let's not put any penny upside down, right?
She's wise.
Yeah.
I just want to know if it's like red-red or like we have now.
The pressure to red's cheaper.
Well, the black colors that fades the least.
They both were. Those had the best UV protection.
I want, I like Pittman orange, but they said that was terrible in the sun.
That would have been, yeah. It wasn't considerably cheaper, because that was my primary concern. If one was cheaper than the other.
The black would look great the first six months.
Yeah, they said it doesn't fade.
Yeah, but black gets chalky.
All right, well, I, I think you're right. We're not going to reach an agreement, and that's not what the motion says, and we'll go ahead and leave the vote. And we will wait first, or we'll let some experts weigh in, like the track coach.
Sounds like a good summer project.
Yeah, all of the above. All right, I apologize. This time.
I don't, please.
Mrs. Bolton.
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell.
Yeah.
Mr. Grossman.
Yes.
Mrs. Higby-Iono.
Yes.
Mrs. Papalardo.
Yes.
Mrs. Pope.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, let's take us to Curriculum Instruction. I'll turn it over to our committee chairman, Mrs. Bolton.
Okay. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five at 4:30 PM, and the meeting lasted. It a little less than an hour. In attendance were Dr. Preston, Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Pope, and myself. We discussed some of the items on the agenda tonight. It was a pretty slow month. Number seven was the school calendar. We just went over a few events that need to work with some of the dates off and things like that. Number seventeen is the approval of our new VA, who is here tonight, let's see. We also talked about insurance on the Chromebooks that we lend to students each year and the need for families to purchase it. So policy, policy committee will have to get that together so that we can get a policy in place for that as well, but we will cap it off per family if people are concerned and have multiple kids like myself. The Council of Churches met and asked about possibly starting a baccalaureate service up again. It's a little late for this year, but we'll keep it in mind for the future and see if we can work something out with them as well. And then last thing, due to conflicts in scheduling, we will be moving the June and July Board of Ed meetings not on our normal meeting weeks. And that was it. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve items two through twenty-four as written.
Have a second?
Seconds, Papalardo.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Miles, please call the votes.
Mrs. Bolton.
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Grossman.
Yes.
Mrs. Higby-Iono.
Yes.
Mrs. Papalardo.
Yes.
Mrs. Pope.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, communication policy, I'll turn it over. Oh, yes, thank you. Yes, please, I will, yes, please. Mrs. Stewart, if you'd like to, I apologize.
Thank you. I'm going to be at the podium or don't you?
Yeah, podium's good. I love a podium.
I do, too.
I just want to take a minute and thank everyone for their support in these two positions and Mr. Caltabiano, who will never get the two full days he had to spend with me until we're here back. I think we have two great candidates, so I'm going to introduce first, I'll take Mrs. Skanes, come on up. So she'll be taking on the position of Assistant Principal for grades seven through nine and academic services. So I'm going to read, it's going to be awkward because I'm going to read about you while I'm standing next to you. Christina Skanes is honored to be returning to Pittman Public Schools in the position of Assistant Principal for grades seven to nine and academic services. With over fifteen years of experience, she brings a deep commitment to student success, equity, and academic excellence to Pittman Junior/Senior High School. After serving as a dedicated school counselor in Pittman for nine years, she became the Director of Student Personnel Services for Paulsbury Public Schools. As a district-level leader, she oversaw all standardized testing, including NJSLA, NJGPA, SATs, PSATs, AP testing, Accuplacer. Mrs. Skanes spearheaded several key initiatives aimed at enhancing school safety, inclusion, access, and student opportunities. Most notable are the successful restructures of the Paulsbury Junior/Senior High's master schedule, crisis and safety management assessment procedures, as well as graduation tracking. Mrs. Skanes has delivered professional development on best practices for de-escalation in addition to academic behavioral and social emotional interventions. Not only did her efforts improve academic engagement, it bolstered staff confidence, consistency, and school culture. Mrs. Skanes holds master's degrees in both school counseling and school leadership. Her leadership philosophy centers on eliminating barriers to access and working collaboratively with staff, students, and families to create meaningful educational opportunities. She's excited to bring her passion, expertise, and new experience back to Pittman Junior/Senior High School and looks forward to fostering previous relationships while also cultivating new ones. Thank you.
Next, we have Caitlin Hess. She will be our Assistant Principal for grades ten through twelve and our Athletic Director. Caitlin brings fourteen years of experience as a teacher of biological sciences at Kingsway Regional High School, where she taught a diverse array of courses and levels. She introduced forensics as an elective in the district and has delivered professional development on various topics including pedagogical practices, equity, curriculum development, and educational technology. As the High School Science Department Chair, she leads a team of nearly thirty teachers and has mentored numerous new educators throughout her tenure. Caitlin has actively participated in several committees, including District's data team and the high, the high school safety and climate team. Her contributions have been recognized with the prestigious Dragon Award at the high school and the Distinguished Service Award from the district. In addition to teaching, department chair, and committee roles, Caitlin has coached throughout her tenure at Kingsway. She is currently serving as the head coach for girls cross-country, boys and girls winter track and field, and girls spring track and field. Her teams have achieved success at the state, regional, and national levels. Most notably, her girls cross-country team was the first in South Jersey history to qualify for the Nike Nationals in Portland, Oregon, an honor awarded to only twenty high school teams nationwide every year. They won five consecutive South Jersey Group Four championships and held the overall South Jersey record for team average at the championship course for several years. Caitlin has coached eleven state championship teams during her time at Kingsway, most recently as head coach for boys winter track and field. During that season, her boys sprint medley relay won the national championship. She has been recognized as the South Jersey Track Coaches Association Coach of the Year as well as a three-time South Jersey Times Coach of the Year. Caitlin is honored at the opportunity to use her years of experience in education and athletics to serve our Pittman community. She is committed to making a positive impact in the lives of students and helping them achieve their goals both inside the classroom and on the field. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take some pictures and stuff for the website, so probably about a five-minute recess.
Black or red?
No.
I just want to take a minute and thank everyone for their support of these two positions and Mr. Caltabiano, who will never get the two full days he had to spend with me and some of our members back. I think we have two great candidates. So I'm going to introduce first, I'll take Mrs. Scales, come on up. So she'll be taking on the position of assistant principal for grades seven through nine and academic services. So I'm going to read, it's going to be awkward. Christina Scales is honored to be returning to Pittman Public Schools in the position of assistant principal for grades seven to nine and academic services. With over fifteen years of experience, she brings a deep commitment to student success, equity, and academic excellence to Pittman Junior/Senior High School. After serving as a dedicated school counselor in Pittman for nine years, she became the director of student personnel services for Paulsboro Public Schools. As a district-level leader, she oversaw all standardized testing, including NJSLA, NJGPA, SATs, PSATs, AP testing, Accuplacer. Mrs. Scales spearheaded several key initiatives aimed at enhancing school safety, inclusion, access, and student opportunities. Most notable are the successful restructures of the Paulsboro Junior/Senior High's master schedule, crisis and safety management assessment procedures, as well as graduation tracking. Mrs. Scales has delivered professional development on best practices for de-escalation in addition to academic behavioral and social emotional interventions. Not only did her efforts improve academic engagement, it bolstered staff confidence, consistency, and school culture. Mrs. Scales holds master's degrees in both school counseling and school leadership. Her leadership philosophy centers on eliminating barriers to access and working collaboratively with staff, students, and families to create meaningful educational opportunities. She's excited to bring her passion, expertise, and new experience back to Pittman Junior/Senior High School and looks forward to fostering previous relationships while also cultivating new ones. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Caitlin Hess. She will be our assistant principal for grades ten through twelve and our athletic director. Caitlin brings fourteen years of experience as a teacher of biological sciences at Kingsway Regional High School, where she taught a diverse array of courses and levels. She introduced forensics as an elective in the district and has delivered professional development on various topics, including pedagogical practices, equity, curriculum development, and educational technology. As the high school science department chair, she leads a team of nearly thirty teachers and has mentored numerous new educators throughout her tenure. Caitlin has actively participated in several committees, including the district's data team and the high school's safety and climate team. Her contributions have been recognized with the prestigious Dragon Award at the high school and the Distinguished Service Award from the district. In addition to teaching, department chair, and committee roles, Caitlin has coached throughout her tenure at Kingsway. She is currently serving as the head coach for girls' cross-country, boys' and girls' winter track and field, and girls' spring track and field. Her teams have achieved success at the state, regional, and national levels. Most notably, her girls' cross-country team was the first in South Jersey history to qualify for the Nike Nationals in Portland, Oregon, and honor awarded to only twenty high school teams nationwide every year. They won five consecutive South Jersey Group Four championships and held the overall South Jersey record for team average at the championship course for several years. Caitlin has coached eleven state championship teams during her time at Kingsway, most recently as head coach for boys' winter track and field. During that season, her boys' sprint medley relay won the national championship. She has been recognized as the South Jersey Track Coaches Association Coach of the Year as well as a three-time South Jersey Times Coach of the Year. Caitlin is honored at the opportunity to use her years of experience in education and athletics to serve our Pittman community. She is committed to making a positive impact in the lives of students and helping them achieve their goals both inside the classroom and on the field. Thank you.